I'm here tonight to give a report on what's happening with the Grafton Education Commission. Early in June, the GEF held its annual Color Blast. Over 700 people attended, an all-time record. We also had an all-time record in -- thank you. We also had an all-time record in sponsorships. A special event was offered this year at the Color Blast. We said that the school that had the most -- the biggest percentage of participants this year had an opportunity to color blast their principal. Woodview students won the competition. Principal Gunderson showed up at the event wearing what appeared to be a World War I-type German gas mask. He was a big hit. Pictures are on our website. Looking ahead, the GEF is planning two recruiting socials this summer, both at the River Room in downtown Grafton. Our goal is to raise awareness of the GEF's mission and get more people involved in our organization. I should mention that since we started in 2009 with eight people, we're now at 35 people. So we have a lot of people involved. There are opportunities at all levels, on the board or helping organize events. On the July 15th social, several people joined us. We will begin again at the River Room on Monday, August 19th for our second social of the summer. We are excited to launch a student ambassador program, which would involve a high school student volunteer. The student ambassador will assist with the organization, GEF's fundraising and community events. We're also planning to launch an educator of the year program to recognize outstanding contributions from our teachers and staff. Look for more information on these two new ventures in the coming weeks. We're replacing the Super Bowl with a new event. Still working on the name. It will be held at the River Room on April 18th, 2020. The event will include the $10,000 reverse cash raffle. We just felt the Super Bowl was kind of worn out, and we needed some new energy in our fundraising, in our community. So we're replacing the Super Bowl with a different event. It'll be at the River Room on April 18th, 2020. The Color Blast is also moving. It's moving from the spring and the showers and the thunderstorms to the fall of 2020. Any questions about any of this, or any questions about the GEF? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, and thanks for your continued support and work on behalf of all of the students. All right. Mr. Pollak.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jay Pollak. I sent the note that I'm going to read tonight to all the board members and to Jeff yesterday. My comments tonight are in regards to the recent events in which the board approved $800,000 of CapEx money to fund the varsity baseball and softball fields, as well as moving the JV baseball field from Grafton High School over to John Long. First and foremost, to the board members directly, thank you very much for all you do. Most residents have no idea the time that's involved, and no one pats you guys on the back to say thank you, or at least not enough. People come and complain and moan and say, "How come this?" Or "How come that?" So for me, to you guys personally, I don't know how much time you put in. I know it's a lot. I know of several of you on the board, so I just want to say thank you from my perspective and from my family's perspective. Also, to the GHS staff, Jamie Schofield in particular, and the staff that he has, they need to be commended for the improvements that have been made to the Ninth Avenue baseball and softball fields over the past several years. There's been a lot of money invested, and that I think H&amp;K is the firm, they're out of Watertown, that does the work for us. They've done a terrific job. And the compliments that we've received from other North Shore Conference coaches, as well as coaches outside of our conference stating that Grafton has the nicest natural turf field in all of southeast Wisconsin is a testament to everybody in the Grafton School District. So then specifically with regards to the fields, at the May 29th meeting, Jeff, you spoke about safety aspects, and the key for everything moving forward is toward our student athletes at Grafton High School. So now with keeping the fields, the baseball and softball fields at Ninth Ave., what are we doing to address the student athlete safety aspects at that site? We now have two venues for sports. So what's being taken into consideration from the school district for student athlete safety because we now have two venues for sports? Will there be some of the acuity money going towards Ninth Avenue from a student athlete safety perspective? Further down the road, we've never been able to host sectional games for softball and baseball because we don't have the resources to do it. So when I viewed the May 29th meeting, we talked about safety. I get it 100%. What is our plan as a school district for safety at Ninth Avenue now that we've determined to have two separate athletic venues? Can anybody answer that question?
As is customary for non-agenda items, we'll hear your comments tonight to the extent that we can address them or will address them. I suspect this matter will be on future agendas. We will address them there, to the extent that these are matters that administration needs to talk into. You'll get answers to these things, but it's not an agenda matter for tonight, so it wouldn't really be appropriate for us to get into a discussion of them.
Paul, totally understand. Just asking more macro questions, that if somebody knew the answer or answers, you know, please feel free to opine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And then we also spoke about, at the May 29th meeting, the estimated cost from POV was $525,000 to install the turf fields for baseball and softball, and then roughly $275,000 to move the JV field over to John Long in calendar year 2020. And there's your $800,000, you know, rough math. What I found interesting was at that May 29th meeting, POV indicated that they called their vendors, and that yes, work could get done fairly quickly for the fields. So my question was, who did POV call from a vendor's perspective, other than Midwest? Is there someone from the administration here that could tell us that?
So you sent this to me last night, and to be honest with you, I haven't had the chance today to sit down with people and get answers for you, because we're getting ready for this board meeting, so feel free to go through your statement, and we'll get you some answers for some of those pieces. But I really don't want to delay the conversation piece of the meeting in order to try and piece together each of the answers for you, in all honesty.
So Jeff, off the top of your head, do you know, did POV provide us a list of vendors?
They spoke about who they talked to, but that was months ago, and I don't recall in all honesty.
I'm just going through my notes here. Also, at the same meeting, it was mentioned that Stingers and Little League would use the turf fields. Are they contributing costs for the construction of the fields? Would they be paying a user fee? It was just, it was more of a blanket statement that Little League and Stingers would be using the turf fields when they weren't being used from the high school resources. And if they are, I'm totally okay with that, right? I'm a sports person. Does it, is it just for Stingers and Little League? What about other baseball and softball programs? Will they be using the fields? Because Stingers and Little League aren't Grafton school, per se. They're outside organizations. And I could probably name several programs that have Grafton kids playing in programs. So does that mean they're going to be able to use the field as well? And would they pay costs? And just open questions. Then we move forward to the June 26th board meeting, and at TOFER, there was a proposal made to hire Midwest as the vendor to do the fields, in which the board approved. And it was for $370,000, which is significantly less than roughly the $525,000 that was estimated at the May 29th meeting. So what I would like to know is, from a control documentation perspective, and can you share, what is the SOP? What's our standard operating procedure for a CapEx project? $370,000, $525,000. What do we have in place that can be shared? Is there a broken-down detailed cost analysis of what was approved, what was shared in approving the Midwest Sports contract? I'm a sports guy, so when we found out, when I found out that it was approved, terrific. Does that mean the pitcher's mound is going to be dirt? Does that mean the pitcher's mound are going to be turf? What's the thickness of the turf? Is it like Kewaskum, where it's really thin, relatively speaking? Or is it more like Carthage College or Whitefish Bay? What are those specifics? In regards to the project itself, is it going to extend to the foul lines? What's going to happen with the actual infield itself? Will the turf go just to where the dirt is? Is it going to go out 20 feet? There's all sorts of different designs and ideas. So what I would like to say is, or what I'd like to ask is, can that detailed cost analysis be shared? What are we getting for the $370,000? Right now, I don't know. No one has been able to provide specific answers. We talk about safety at the Ninth Avenue field for boys and girls softball and baseball. What about bullpens? Right now, you've got fans at the games, and you've got kids warming up amidst the fans. And guess what? It's not Major League Baseball. Sometimes the pitcher overthrows the catcher, and guess what? Fans get hit. There's not a designated bullpen area, going back to the safety issue. Can I also ask, who bid on the construction of the field other than Midwest Sports? I understand they gave us a terrific bid that was less than our budgeted amount, but businesses are hungry these days, and I could think of six or seven turf companies that would have loved to have bid on the Grafton field. I have not reached out to them. I don't think it's my responsibility to say, "Hey, do you want to bid on a project?" Because that's, you know, I'm just a Joe Q citizen, okay? So what other bids were received, and how were they received, and what were the plans compared to A, B, C, and D? Last bullet point on that is, TOFER, can I ask who authorized you to select Midwest as the contractor for the turf fields?
Well, it wasn't my selection. It was the bid I brought forward to the board.
Right. So you brought the bid forward to the board, and the board approved it, right? Was that the only bid that was received?
Okay, we're not going to get into the back-and-forth here. The board calls three minutes on the, it's not an agenda item that we can discuss.
I understand. It's just a simple question to TOFER. Were there other bids?
I don't want to be argumentative.
I'm down to my last paragraph.
Okay.
So were there other bids? Yes or no?
That was, we're not going to get into that right now. We'll get the answers to those questions that you had.
Okay.
No, there weren't other bids. This wasn't a competitively bid project.
Paul, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I was asking for. Thank you. And then as the project moved forwards, Jeff, you indicated fundraising would be done for the ancillary expenses. I'm just trying to wrap my arms around this. How can we realistically expect to improve dugouts that flood, that are undersized, as well as improving backstop areas after the turf is installed? To me, it's like you're going to build a house, and you're going to do the garage first, and then you're going to go build the house while you've got to knock the garage down to go build the house. My last point, POV also mentioned in their original report, 2014, 2015, about the grandstands or the stands at Ninth Avenue, where there's a major safety issue from an ADA perspective. I think if anyone's been out there, you've seen the gravel, which is not level. The stands are not ADA compliance. We're going on six years now, next year. Nothing's been done. We have a fan that is disabled who struggles to walk from the restrooms to, say, third base side of the fence. And when I walk with this person, I make sure I take him around the bleachers because, quite frankly, he's tripped before. And I just, I'm looking at it from a future liability perspective. Don't want any liability with the school district. So I understand that apparently these fields are going to be done August 1st. With my comments tonight, there's a lot of open questions. Are we prudent in doing this project, starting August 1st, with so many open questions that cannot be answered tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments, your questions, and your commitment to this project, as reflected at the last board meeting. This isn't the last of this item, and there will be more to come and future agenda items. To the extent that we can provide better, deeper information, either administratively or through those future board actions, certainly stay tuned.
Fair enough. And Paul, thank you for answering the question. I do appreciate it.
All right. Keep you posted. Thank you, Jay.
I've got a bit of a piece to add myself. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Mike Rose of Boy Scout Troop 817. I came to a previous meeting a few months ago. I'm here again, and just something I'd like to add from a not necessarily super serious perspective, but for this merit badge, there needs to be like a difference of opinions, and I pretty much need to give the details of both sides and like which side I would identify with. So I mean, if any of you guys disagree on anything, I mean, be sure to make it known because then I can get that one step closer to eagle. But all jokes aside, and back to all seriousness, and just quite sincerely, like, thank you guys for opening up this meeting to the public. Because like, I mean, for merit badge stuff, it's like you can go to this or like zoning committee, which, well, that's fun, but I'd rather go to a school board meeting, so I just thank you for leaving that open.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was your last name?
Rose.
Rose.
Thank you, and welcome, and we'll do our best. All right. Anything else from the public for this evening? If not, then we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are two items. The approval of the minutes from the June 24th, 2019 board meeting, and a statement of receipts and expenditures from June 2019. So they have a motion regarding consent agenda items.
Motion to approve minutes from June 24th, as well as the receipt and expenditures for June 2019.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Because if none, I would like to offer some changes to item number L. And these are changes that I'd like to offer for clarification regarding the baseball and softball field construction services contract. All right? And I will read the corrections. If anybody wants a copy, I'll get a copy for you. But TOFER Adams presented a contract with Midwest Sport and Turf Systems for installation of turf on the baseball and softball fields at the John Long Middle School site. The base contract for installation of turf is $370,000, which is significantly less than the amount, and I would replace budgeted with previously estimated for this work because it's not, in fact, an element that was budgeted. This will, changing the tents from wood, this will allow for, and striking the next part, installation of turf and appropriate and necessary improvements of all elements associated therewith. Our discussion at the time was limited only to the installation of the turf and to the elements associated therewith, not in regards to all the other ancillary things that may need to get done. The proposed timeframe and overall scope of work will put a playable turf surface in place for the start of the spring 2020 baseball and softball seasons. I propose no changes to the second or third paragraph. In the fourth paragraph, I would suggest that it reads, "Further discussion occurred regarding the cost of bringing the JV fields to John Long Middle School, including clarity of the board's continued commitment to the improvements of the baseball and softball elements of the district's overall athletic master plan. These commitments continue to be limited to providing turf for the baseball and softball fields as addressed in the Midwest Sport and Turf Systems contract, and for developing a JV baseball field at John Long Middle School. In regards to the development of a JV baseball field, the board concurred that administration should bring forward a plan of related contracts for the most cost-effective solution that meets the needs of the program in regards to safety, playability, and providing a good experience for athletes and fans." Those would be my corrections.
That was slightly different from what I had.
It's slightly different from what I submitted earlier, yes. So any discussion on those corrections? Anybody want to see them?
I have to abstain of the minutes, but I'm just looking forward. So the bills, I can, do we have to split it? The minutes and the bills, actually, you know what I think about it, or?
No.
Consent agenda, so it's one thing.
Yeah.
It will still pass without your approval.
Right. Any questions on those corrections, additions, modifications? I see none. All right. Then all those in favor of the minutes as amended, and the statement of receipts and expenditures for June? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Thank you. Can you pass that down?
Sure.
All right. Action items. Superintendent's report.
So today marked the beginning of the final session of summer school. So Session C started today. So the next two weeks, we have students actively engaged in our summer school program. And then just a couple reminders for the board as we look ahead to what's coming between now and the August board meeting, is we do have, in 22 days, we will have our district-wide in-person registration that will be occurring at the high school. It's Tuesday, October 13th. Registration goes from 7:30 to 11:30. Take a break for lunch, and then from 12 to 3:00. And then on Wednesday, October 14th, registration occurs then from 12 to 4:00, and 4:30 to 7:00 o'clock. So those are the registration dates and times.
Did you say October?
I meant August.
Okay.
I said October, but I meant August. So thank, I typed October as well. So no, it's August, because that wouldn't be 22 days away. So in 22 days, so we're starting to count down now to when school starts. So 22 days from then, following week, then we have our new teacher in-service time that will, Wednesday and Thursday, we have all new teachers during that time. And then on Monday, August 26th, we will welcome back all of our staff for a new year. And that's when we have the whole staff together. We meet in the auditorium. We'll recognize yours of service, all those pieces. As we look back to last year at this time, our big discussion was, will we start school on time? Will instruction be finished on time? We were meeting not at the high school, we were meeting at John Long, because that was our only building that was actually available to be used. And so a lot of those pieces that we're enjoying this year with having access to Woodview with air conditioning, so we can have students very familiar with the building. All those things are a benefit from the referendum. And now as we look forward to school starting then on Tuesday, September 3rd. So a lot of things coming up in the next couple of weeks, which is exciting. And our district news today, it reminds people about registration that is going on with that. So just wanted to update the board, and as a reminder of some of those pieces.
Any questions? Busy time, no doubt, as systems, people, and facilities get ready for another year. Thanks, Jeff. Committee reports. We had a finance committee meeting on July 8th.
So yeah, finance committee met on July 8th. Primary purpose was to review some information from Horton Group. We had two representatives from Horton, come. We looked back at past experience, namely our insurance rates, renewal rates, the last three years. We're sure 2%, 0%, and 2%. So very favorable. We're expecting not such favorable renewal rates this coming year, based on experience, our past experience. From a claims perspective, it had been real good. We're seeing a little uptick. It hopefully is a fluke, but we're trying to be prepared for that. And so we discussed various options in terms of how to circumvent that renewal rate increase so we can hit our budget. And we directed the administration to look at a combined approach of increasing the renewal rates for employees, and then also looking at some possible plan design changes to help minimize the impact on our budget.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark in the finance committee? All right. Then we'll move on to the personnel report.
So we have two new hires that we asked for the board's approval for, as well as of resignation that we just received. And then there's information of a resignation for a special ed aide. So we'd asked the board to approve the hire of Katherine Bianca, music teacher at Kennedy Elementary School, and Jennifer Gunderson as the district physical therapist. And then to approve the resignation of Zarab Akru, a special education teacher at John Long Middle School. So we missed Zarab and wished her well, as she stays with her family. And then we also, there was a resignation of Judy Rissick, who's a special ed aide, longtime special ed aide at Kennedy Elementary School.
All right. We'll take these in two pieces. First, approval for the new hires. Katherine Bianca, music teacher at Kennedy Elementary School, and Jennifer Gunderson, district physical therapist. I have a motion to approve those hires. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes. Now, a motion to accept the resignation of Zarab Akru, special education teacher at John Long Middle School. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Thank you. Item D, GHS Athletic/Activity Code revisions.
Mr. Morris here is the high school associate principal slash athletic activities director, and he's been working with the committee to review the high school code. And so he's bringing that to your attention tonight and looking for approval in the long history, what some of the changes, suggested changes are.
As all of you, I'm sure, you know, can guess, one document that really is at any athletic director's elbow over the course of their career is the local district's Athletic and Activities Code, and it certainly was mine. It was a document that I got familiar with very quickly here in my time in Grafton, and it's something that I worked with a lot of kids and families, student athletes, teachers, coaches, so on and so forth. The longer that my tenure has gone on here, the more that I realize that the last time our Athletic and Activities Code has been looked at was 2013. So it was something that I really felt that needed to be taken a look at. It's something that I care to take a look at once every two or three years from here on forward, but I certainly wanted to put together a committee of people in the community, on coaching staffs, administration, school board, that could take a look at our current existing document, and really take a look at it from different lenses, and get opinions, collaboration on what's in the best interest of our community and our student athletes in terms of encouraging participation and holding our kids to a very high standard, both in athletics and in other activities. And we began our process in April, finished up just a short time ago to make sure that we had it ready to go for all of you for tonight, going into our 2020, or 2019-2020 school year, which is, you know, in terms of athletically, is just a breath away. So I know that you received these changes, revisions that were marked, and really what I'm here to do is answer any questions regarding this document that we brought to you today, and answer those questions at this time. Before we move forward, I should mention a big thank you to the community members that did work on this, which included Amanda Brennan, GHS staff member and community member, Ryan Brolgman, GHS teacher, girls' cross-country coach, Mike Kleina, Grafton High School Dean of Students, Mark Taylor, Grafton Board of Education representative, Damon James, Grafton High School teacher, boys' basketball coach and community member, myself as associate principal and athletic director, and Kelly Reek, community member and GHS staff member.
So can you summarize for us, Kevin, like, you used track changes, is what it looks like, right? So we have what we currently had, and then you cross out things. So everything that still isn't crossed out is going to be in the new code?
Absolutely.
Could you maybe, a nickel version of like, what is the biggest change that may be the most discussion that your committee had?
Absolutely. It's, we're really, the committee--
He wants to hear disagreements.
Yeah. Well, first of all, you know, I'm going to say this in all honesty, our conversations were very rich and very interesting and very well worthwhile, because we had such a wide variety of perspectives within that room, which is really what, you know, I was hoping for. Because not all of us have very detailed history of the community. Not all of us have different perspectives as parents, as coaches, as administrators. So that was all, sure, Mark would agree, the collaboration was really top-notch within that room. But really, the purpose of the committee was multifaceted. Number one, we wanted to come together, and we wanted to make it very reader-friendly for the community, because documents like this, the more that you read, and we researched several from around the area and the state, they're hard to follow sometimes. We wanted to make sure that this followed a logical pattern. We wanted to make sure that we-- We wanted to make sure that we trimmed anything that was, that was not significant or not relevant anymore, not applicable anymore, such as the four-sport athlete, which doesn't occur anymore now that summer baseball has adopted the spring. We wanted to make sure that we put an emphasis on other activities as, as well as athletics, your, your performance-based activities, your elected, elected positions within the school, because those students are school representatives as well. We also wanted to take a look at what we found to be, one of our biggest changes was our, our behavior consequences for rules violations. What we found as we went on, as we talked to other, as I talked to other athletic directors, as we talked to other school administrators, as we started to take a look at what's happening around us, we found that there was a pretty significant gap in what we practiced here, and what was, you know, pretty commonplace in other districts around us in terms of, in terms of consequences. And we're not saying that one is right, or one is, one is more right than the other, but what we were looking at was, what gives us a chance as an educational community, as a school, as a school district, to give our student athletes and our, and our students that participate in our activities, both appropriate consequences and addressing and having conversation with students, but also giving them the opportunity to participate and earn their time back again. I think that you'll see from the behavior chart within the revised version, we did change that behavior chart somewhat significantly. We went to a point-based system, where each student starts out at zero. Those who are, who committed infractions this previous past year, or past years, will serve those infractions as they were assigned, but then will start out from zero on this new, on this new system. This is a very similar system to several school districts that neighbor us and that are within our conference, which is where we got our idea. Points are added to a student's record for each infraction, with an opportunity through community service to earn some points back. If they hit 11 points, that would mean that they are ineligible for any activities or athletics for the rest of their high school career. I don't think that I need to detail each step, because I'm sure that you've taken, taken a look at it, but what we see is we're starting to assimilate, assimilate what's going on around us, and become very consistent with other districts within our conference, which we feel very good about. We feel that it gives, like I said, appropriate consequences to our student athletes and our athletes, and our students involved in activities, yet gives them an education, allows us to educate those kids on choices moving forward.
I'll add, it was very healthy discussions, and it wasn't, I would say unanimous all around, but those discussions, I think, brought us to a real good spot. I like the accumulation-type progression of points, and I think that's good. The behaviors do reset every calendar year, so that if you have a behavior point one year, it doesn't carry over the second, just, because that would become very high. But we thought it's part of that education process, to have, you know, an incident one year, let's help them get through it. And I guess I was very impressed with the staff here, and the desire to take that on with our student athletes and our students in general, of making a learning opportunity and, and trying to coach them through these issues. One of the things, too, that I thought of as you were talking, Kevin, was like the vaping. I mean, that was one thing that was missing from our old code. And so that's, those are kind of, that was one thing that we had to bring it up to date, I think, to make it more relevant to today's time.
One interesting conversation that I had with, with another North Shore Conference athletic director, when we were talking, I was, I was kind of picking his brain about some of the things that they did, just to compare it to ours in the early stages. And we talked about different scenarios and different things that we had come across. And at one point, he said, "Well, what would happen in your building if situation X arose?" And I said, "Well, if it happened inside the building, that student would lose almost 50% of everything they did for one calendar year." And he said, "Really?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "Multi-sport athlete, different activities?" I said, "It wouldn't matter, be half of everything that they did for one calendar year." And his reaction was, "How do you get that kid to come back? How do you get that kid to, to, because that, that student or student athlete probably would be gone." I said, "Well, maybe yes, maybe no. What's the situation in your building?" And he said, "Well, I can speak for my building and other places that I've been, that, you know, it'd probably be about a 20 to 30% reduction of their activity currently." And what I saw, there was a pretty significant gap in practices. And again, I'm not saying that one is more right than the other, but I was looking, but I think myself and what the committee was looking for was a little bit more of a balance of our opportunity to address the situation, to give a student an appropriate consequence moving forward, educate them on, on what's going on, and seeing, and emphasizing that a pattern cannot develop, otherwise the consequences will get more progressive, and, and hopefully someday get them involved in activities once again.
I would say that the red line version probably doesn't do it justice, but it really was cleaned up and streamlined, too. The old one was very hard to read, because it started and things were brought into it and just, it wasn't ever revisited and done in total again, so it was, it was amended and just, it was hard to read through and figure out how things were applied. This is much cleaner and easier to read, both good or not.
I would agree.
Along those lines. B on page eight, says, "Points are cumulative, and will be kept track of throughout the student's high school career." And the next sentence is, "Point total does not reset beginning of each year."
That's correct. So if-
Except for first degree, which will reset.
So if we're talking about in-school behaviors, so like a one-point infraction, those have the opportunity to reset at the beginning of each year. However, a student, let's say a student had a alcohol, tobacco, drug situation, that remains there for the remainder of their high school career. So those points are cumulative, do not reset at the end of each year. So if a parent, community member, what have you, ever asked me, "Well, you know, my child had a consequence of a five, a five-point reduction. That resets at the beginning of next school year." No, it does not. That stays there. They can earn points back through community service, through administration-approved community service, but those points remain on their record.
So I'm kind of surprised that bullying was put as a one point versus, so if a student is in possession of a cigarette, that's five points. If they bully another student, that's one point, and as many times as you do it during the year, it resets at the beginning of the next year?
I think that would be a little bit more on a case-by-case basis. So I think that this is a guideline for that, but I think as it administrat, as administration may be in, you know, concurrence with our superintendent, that that would be a further discussion if, if matters arose.
That was my question, too, about the bullying. I'm concerned that it would be, something that would be reset, because this is, and that, you know, everyone-
For the student they bullied, I'm sure it didn't reset the following fall.
No, I see that.
I'm sure the effects would still be there the following fall. If they were bullied in May, you know-
Sure.
Come September, I don't think that student's going to feel better.
I definitely see that perspective.
But just so I understand, if, I mean, if you were to be bullying three times, four times, there would be a consequence, because they're not-
Absolutely.
You'd get to three points.
Those points would accumulate, yes.
In the course of a year-
Right. You'd get to three points.
Right.
But it would still be a first-degree offense, no reset.
I agree, but, but the hope would be that through administration, we're working with those students-
Absolutely.
-to ensure that, you know, once you suffer a real-life consequence regarding your actions, we should be expecting to see changes in behavior.
And not only that, but not only would it be an administrative perspective, but that would be administrative conversation with coaches, with advisors-
Right.
-to make sure that they're in line with that as well, to work with those programs.
Yes. One concern that I have relative to cumulative point systems like this is insubordination, bullying may mean something different to different people.
Agreed.
And so, you know, how are we ensuring that this is being consistently applied from, you know, whoever is responsible for handing out these, these issues? And admittedly, there is an appeal process, so if you feel, as a student, that this wasn't right, you can appeal any individual instance, correct?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, there's, there's conversations with parents, there's, there's the administrations, and to communicate with families, to communicate with coaches, to have those conversations with kids, and that's a large part of what we do, is have those conversations with kids and families about what's going on, have those conversations with teachers about what exactly they see in the hallways and classrooms, and have the opportunity to address that with those, with those people.
Any other questions? So there are particular areas that stood out, either Mark or Kevin, in regards to the most differences of opinion relative to the draft before us, or the proposal before us?
Well, the consequences was a big discussion item, because it changed pretty drastically, as Kevin cited the situation that he discussed with another administrator. So that was pretty significant, I would say. Kind of what we were talking about there was behavior. That was another long discussion. And there's going to have to be some discussions with students on what is appropriate, expected behavior, and I think we'll have some, some staff that will file reports for minor things, and I think Kevin's going to have to use his best judgment, maybe along with Mike Kline, Dean of Students, on what is the degree of this? Is it, is it a minor, or is it more significant that really garners more attention?
And that was part of our discussion as well, with several teachers in the room, with our Dean of Students in the room. You know, different teachers have different ways sometimes of doing things. Some teachers will file a Skyward, a discipline referral on Skyward for something, you know, just, "Hey, look, I need to document this right away." Other teachers will take a little bit more time, it's more their style to have conversations with students on their own without bringing it to administration right away. So that's, that's a piece that we really took into consideration as our conversations moved forward. You know, also, a big point that we, that we took a look at was the point-based system. You know, when, when one of our first, first meetings in April, we kind of looked at each other and said, "I don't know if that's something that we really want to go with," but the more that we had our discussions weekly, and the more that we took a look at some of the models that other districts were using, the more it started to say, you know what, this is, you know, point, the consequences are progressive, points are cumulative, you know, we think that we're starting to change our minds, that we think that this is going to be a good fit for our building.
Is there anything other school districts do for student athletes when they're playing in games? You get the one player, he gets 15 technicals or five technicals in the course of a year, or something like that?
Sure.
That, that also gets into consideration, to where, I'm sure it's in a team rule-
Sure.
-of penalty there, but I think if someone fell through that, it would be something I'm documenting to this one.
Yep. Steve, to answer your question, most likely, that's going to be a program, that's going to be a program policy, whether that be basketball, or soccer, or football, or baseball, or whatever else. But as an athletic director, I'm going to meet with those students. You know, if we have a student that might be ejected from a game, there's a WIE, then not only is there my wish to meet with that student to address the situation, but there's a WIE process to go along with that, and paperwork that needs to be filled out from my end. But things like technical fouls, things like if we have a rare occurrence of an ejection, that's at the very least the coach and myself meeting with that student athlete to discuss that situation, if it's not addressed in the code. And in the code, there is a, a section that does say that coaches can take away playing time per team policy, or per coach's decision, for things that are not found in this, in this code. And that's, those are conversations that I have with coaches directly as well.
I have a comment before we close this out. On what Kerry and Joe were saying, I, I do think bullying is worse than having possession of a tobacco product, you know? Tobacco product affects the individual, right? Bullying kind of, that gets into other individuals and their educational experience. And so I have to just go on record and say that, that, to me, is worse and should be a five-point, if having a cigarette's a five-pointer, have, you know, being a bully should be a five-pointer, too. I mean, especially considering the role our athletes, you know, they have leadership roles. So to be bullied by, you know, someone in that position is, it's a lot different than being bullied by someone who's doing nothing, you know, and just being a bully, right? So I'd like to see the bullying be a five-point cumulative.
I see that perspective.
Any other thoughts from the, to that?
I guess I, I'm looking at it from like the prior conversation. I think interpretation of what is bullying to John, to you, and what is it to me, and what is it to Kevin, and what is it, that varies. And so, a five-point, there'd have to be a lot more specifics on what-
Well, if it doesn't, if it doesn't reach a threshold, it's not, you know, what is the threshold of bullying?
On the surface, I don't disagree with you, John, but then I, I think of parents that have called and said, "My kid heard a bad word on the playground, and that's bullying."
Wow. I mean, that's where I'm going to be.
Well, but that, if we just say it's bullying, not five points, I, okay, I disagree with that parent, but they felt very strongly about that.
Maybe we need a cleaner, cleaner definition of bullying. I mean, because hearing a bad word isn't bullying, but getting shoved around and intimidated.
Sure. And I believe that we went through district-
You know what I mean?
Yeah. We went through district policy and student handbook and things like that. And I definitely see your perspective, John. And that's, that was part of our conversation, and I definitely see Kerry's as well, and Kerry's for that matter. But in the meantime, yeah, this is something that, taken very seriously by high school administration. And incidences like that, you know, code or no code, are going to be taken very seriously and addressed within the building, as we find out more about them, as things are brought to us, or things are, that are observed, absolutely. It's something that we do not take lightly.
Do you know that other districts that have adopted a methodology similar to this, how they would categorize bullying?
Specifically bullying? I think it's different for different districts, but that's something that, you know, I would always take a look at, and I would always, you know, pick the brains of different athletic directors, administrators, and always take a look at different codes.
Bullying is, it's, it's changing over the years. Like, my kids will, I've got three, they come to me with, "Oh, that was bull-" I'm like, "No, no, no, no. That was just some bad behavior, that's not bullying." Bullying is, you know, it's a specific, I don't know what the definition is, but-
Sure.
I mean, it's different than something inappropriate happening, that's just something inappropriate happening. But bullying is when, right, I mean, they target somebody, they intimidate somebody, and somebody feels uncomfortable coming to the school, and that interferes with their education.
Right.
Right? So it shouldn't be, you know, there's, I think there's probably too much political correctness out there right now, and I don't agree with that. But there is bullying, and it's not that you heard a bad word, it's not that somebody said something crappy to you. It's, it's a different thing. I don't know what it is, but I would like for y'all to look into that and get some clarity on it. If it reaches that point, then yeah, you can't be doing that here. You're not going to be tossing a footballer on at the football game if you're also intimidating our students.
I would just say that, on that terms, that it's not clarified. I would trust both Scott and Kevin that if they say it's bullying, that they both have a firm understanding of what bullying is, and would never, you know, like, whim, say, "Oh, that was bullying." And if they raise it to bullying, to me, that is five points, because I don't think it's something lightly that Kevin or Scott, or any high school administrator would lightly say, "This was bullying." From, I would say, most of the administrat, not all administrators take it very seriously and do not label behavior as bullying unless they truly feel, and I believe all administrators have a firm understanding of what bullying is, maybe better than some parents do, but I think all administrators should and probably do have a firm understanding of what bullying really is.
So, so, because I think, a kid bullies, there's different, there's different levels to that bullying, right? There's even, it could really be bullying, but it could be more extreme than others. And if it's an extreme sense, I'm assuming that kid's going to get suspended, right? I mean, that's, you sort of sort of tie that in. So what a, it sounds like what I'm hearing the board say is like, what if, what if underneath, what if like, if a kid was suspended for bullying, but that was a cumulative point that stayed with that kid?
Right. I'm shocked that suspension-
You know what I mean?
You could bully to the point of suspension, it's only one point, and it's gone.
So, so I mean, so that's what you're saying, is if the concern is bullying, it rises to the level of suspension, because you're going to get, because then if it happens again, you're going to get suspended again. Like, and it happens again, you're going on a pre-expulsion counter, and if it happens again, you're coming to the board for expulsion, in all honesty. Like, that's progressive discipline, is how it works. And so, like, that would sort of separate that, because I think, I think it will be hard to say, "Well, this was bullying, but it wasn't, but it was, it was a, it was, we're having a conversation with this kid, you know, they've served a consequence, we've given a consequence, it's on their, it's on Skyward, if it happens again, there's progressive discipline that goes with it." Versus other type of bullying that occurs, you immediately give a, there's a, there's a, maybe a suspension, maybe it's a detention, but there's something that immediately goes with it because of the level, or you've had conversations of other concerns you've had, and now this needs to be a major issue for the high school, I believe, is, is more of what I'm thinking.
We do have in board policy, there's a physical, verbal, psychological, and secret bullying.
And the, the sort of thing is, so a kid posts something on Snapchat that's bullying, and so they say something inappropriate, and so that's, that's a five-pointer.
Well, I, I disagree with, I disagree with the whole concept of what happens on Snapchat is, you know, I mean, I'm concerned with what happens here on our property. You know what I mean? Because everything happens on social media, and we don't want it to happen, but, you know, we can't police the whole world, right? I mean, we, we take care of what happens on this property, right? I mean, we take care of what happens on this property, right? So, you know, what cyberbullying, I mean, who knows? I don't, I don't know, but if, but if a kid is here on this property and he gets to the point where he's getting suspended or detained, you know, he's getting detention, then yeah, that should be cumulative, because that's, to me anyways, just my opinion, and I think that's why I'm here, that's a lot worse than having a cigarette in your pocket, to me, because you're interfering with somebody else's educational experience. If you want to give yourself lung cancer, that's just you, right? I mean, but if you're gonna start taking away other people's educational experiences, that's, to me, it's worse.
I agree with what Kerry said on the, you know, when it rises to that, you guys know it when you see it, and I agree, I trust that judgment. I mean, I get that tobacco, it's legal for them to have, I mean, most of our students have assumed, or not. It does still seem, you know, one point for bullying, but if you're late, that's two or you miss a class, that's two months.
It's not just miss, it's a two-monthly citation.
Right, but nobody, you're hurting yourself by that, I guess, at that point, I mean. No, so I can see it, if it's actually bullying, because, you know, you say you don't think that's bullying, but parents who strongly disagree with that, so that's where it has to come back to, you guys to say that's not bullying.
And I would trust administration to determine, is that bullying or not? I think everybody's pretty reasonable and I think we all know what it is. It's hard to define, I think, but I think we all know it when we see it.
But for clarification relative to the written policy, do we want to add in that second sub-bullet, bullying, harassment, and hazing, which does not include police involvement or suspension? Suspension that does not include a municipal citation issued and pertain to bullying? And then add a second bullet under third degree bullying or repeated bullying that may give rise to a recommendation for suspension?
I would say yes to that.
Or do you want to send it back to the committee? I'm assuming that there's some time of the essence here.
If it was a representative of our high school that was in administration's opinion, bullying to the level of, you know, in police, law enforcement involvement, police citation, I would be okay with that rising to the level of a five-point reduction.
I don't think it needs the police citation to rise to that level, to be honest.
I'm not hearing any other problems with the policy as drafted, I'm hearing some concern relative to the degree to which bullying should be reflected in here and I'm offering a possible solution that would allow us to move this thing forward.
Can you see this? Mark is our representative from the committee?
No, I think that's good.
You can live with those changes?
Yes.
Joe? Kerry?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yes.
Is a representative of the committee in administration?
Yeah, I trust Mark, I wasn't in committee meetings myself, so.
I think that would be a good, I think the committee would totally agree with that.
I think so too.
Because it looks like you're looking for action on this tonight?
I believe he is.
I am.
That's our change.
Are there anything, other things that we may want to take a look at? Okay, then I entertain a motion to approve the GHS activity code revisions as amended and, or as discussed, amended and presented.
Some of them.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, thank you very much. Thank you to the entire committee for their work in updating this, we look forward to regular updates or more regular updates. All right, item B, notice of student academic standards, this is of course in accordance with Wisconsin statutes.
Yes, it is, and Diane had a family illness that she had to take care of, so I will take this on. So she outlines, her memo outlines why our academic standard is important, we believe that all students deserve a rigorous learning experience, expectations and beliefs that go with it create that growth mindset for learning, setting those expectations are things that we do on an individual basis for our teachers and as they set those standards for our students. So there's a link that goes to the DPI academic standards, we do engage our staff in deeply understanding academic standards, continue of learning, as you come to curriculum meetings, you hear a lot about the standards, what standard are they looking at, which ones are they emphasizing? We saw their data retreat a couple weeks ago, that each grade level of elementary school picking a standard that they were assessing and trying to get 100% of the students to learn that standard. So we see that and not only talk about it, but we also see it in action so that they can provide high-quality responsive instruction to all students. We use the following standards though, we use Wisconsin academic standards when we're setting our curriculum, we use Common Core State Standards, the disciplinary literacy standards, next generation science standards, ACT College and Career Ed standards, national standards for health, rural language and art, and the national sexuality education standards for human growth and development instruction. So what we do is we have all these standards and we choose the highest standard, so we don't stick with one and say, well, that's good enough, so we're gonna do that. We get all these standards in that content area and we choose the highest standards for our students so that they can be as successful as they can be in our classroom and our teachers work towards that. So we need to have this as a approval that we are, these are the academic standards that we use when we're setting our curriculum.
I will make a motion to approve the standards.
Second. Motion is made, seconded, any discussion? Appreciate the fact that we are looking for the utmost rigor in all of the standards and I think that's your point, we choose the highest standard, the one that is gonna drive the best result possible with the most rigor, and I think that's appropriate. All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, thank you. Jeff? Item F, 2019-20 instructional aid compensation.
Yes, the next couple items have to do with employee wages increases for next year, we've broken it up into a couple of different groups. The first group we're looking at is instructional aids. As we budgeted from the beginning of this budget process for the 2019-2020 budget, we are recommending a 2.5% increase for instructional aids, which would be a cost of roughly $19,696 for next year.
I will make a motion to go with your recommendation for the increase.
Any discussion? Is it comparable to last year's increase?
Last year was 2%, then we also had some adjustments depending on how many years they had.
Ah, that's right, yep, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to accept the administrative recommendation regarding increases for aids? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Okay, support staff compensation.
All right, so the next employee group, we also come forward with a recommendation for support staff of a 2.5% increase in wages for 2019-2020. The cost for this to the budget would be $31,620. We'd be looking for approval of that as well.
Any questions for Tofa? Nothing, I would look to a motion. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of a 2.5% increase for the 2019-2020 for support staff, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Student activity accounts.
All right, we need board approval to open up accounts for Fund 60, our student activity accounts. We are looking for you to approve the opening of an account for the class of 2023. In addition, for information, we are closing an account, the class of 2019, and I've provided information on where those funds would be transferred to, for your information, and again, we'd be looking for approval to open the account for the class of 2023.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, thank you. Fund 46 update, Tofa, yours as well?
Yes, so we have some CDs maturing this year that have been invested in Fund 46. Unlike many of our other funds, these funds that were created roughly three years ago aren't available for five years after the account has started, so it's provided some opportunities for us to invest in them in longer terms than we otherwise normally would. We have some CDs maturing that do have some interest that are being added to Fund 46 as well as those along with the invested dollar amounts. We are going to be reinvesting those monies in a two-year CD at 2.5% interest, along with the $130,000 that we have budgeted to be transferred into Fund 46 in this year's budget. We roughly expect that when they mature in two years, that they will include the original investment as well as over $26,000 in interest earned. We are expecting that by the time the funds are available to be used, July 1st, 2021, that we'll have over $1.1 million available. And this would be information from me.
Any questions for Tofa? Excellent, thank you. Item J, student overnight trip request.
So we would ask the board to approve this student overnight trip request for John Long Middle School students, so this is for students that will be in seventh or eighth grade during the 2020-2021 school year, so every two years, Sarah Stenzlowski leads a group of students and parents to Washington DC. Lyndy just went on this, so I saw this as a parent as well, it was her chance to go and so they left after school was out, because once again, they're setting up for that 2021, so it's their one chance, so instead, if you're going, if you're in seventh grade or in eighth grade, it's an opportunity and by the board giving approval well in advance, they can start fundraising. And also, it allows parents to set up a payment plan that allows them to stretch the cost, which you can see is approximately $2,000, to be able to do that. So it's a great thing for kids and Sarah does a nice job with it, and they've done it for her. It's been a lot, yes, it's been a lot, which is great, she goes up her time to do it and the kids have a great time and they see some really historical pieces, our country's history and bring some of those things that you see on TV to life and help them be better citizens hopefully as well. So we've asked the board to approve this group, this request.
So they have a motion to approve the educational tour request as presented?
So move.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes, thank you. Item K, referendum budget update.
Yes, so included in your packet is a, it's a budget summary, included, many items, I'll go through them, we focus certainly over the past couple of years now of making sure that we finish construction on time, on budget. Jamie's given construction updates monthly over that period of time, he'll still continue to do that after I follow with this budget summary. So it starts off with the funding sources, so I list out the bond proceeds from the $39.93 million referendum bonds, as well as the $450,000 in interest that we are estimating to have earned off of those proceeds. In addition, you'll see over $187,000 in focus on energy credits that are related to the work that's been done over the past couple of years in our buildings. Now, outside the referendum, but I would say parallel and in conjunction with, we have some additional pieces of revenue. One would be the additional bond proceeds of $2.16 million, and these were taken out in a budget neutral way that would not increase the tax burden, but also not impact the classroom. We're able to use those funds to do additional pieces that were not included in the referendum. And then in addition to that, we have the security grant of $80,000, which was made available, that at the time when we were under construction, we were able to further enhance our security upgrades that we were working on within the referendum. Now, if you move down below, we have the portion essentially that we have currently been billed at what we call the three sites in the referendum project, which was the high school, Woodview, which in the budget perspective did include some John Long Middle School pieces, as well as Kennedy. At this point, we've been billed the $40,291,000, leaving us with $2.5 million. Now, as you work down below there, we still have some items that are completed, we still need to be billed for those items that have been finished, as well as some items that do need to be completed. And you can see between fees that still need to be billed, that would go to Hoffman, as well as work at the high school, we have a number of summer projects slated for next year at John Long Middle School, and a few pieces that we're finishing up at Woodview and Kennedy. And again, much of this is complete, just not billed, some of it, and some of those big pieces, you see the exterior work, some of the landscaping and the leveling out of the grounds, those are pieces that have to be completed. We're expecting that to total roughly $2.280,000. Now, what that means is, this all coming in, we leave still about $236,000 to be allocated. As far as the timeline goes, we're expecting that by the end of September, we'll have the pieces that are either to be billed, billed, or to be completed, finished and able to be billed by that end of September piece, so we would know in October, two things, the final cost that came in for all these pieces that were in the referendum, with the addition of being able to have solid bids on the work being done at John Long Middle School. Again, we worked to find out some of the costs for that for this current summer, timing-wise, we couldn't get that done, so we're holding off until next summer. By October, we should have those bids in and then we'll have those costs slated out, so we'll know, we'll have a much firmer idea of what those funds to be allocated come to. If I wanted to bring that, the summary to you, focus has really heavily been on getting schools started on time, and Hoffman has worked with us as a great partner to make sure we start on time and to keep our budget in line as we move along in the process of going through this. Any questions?
I was gonna ask, so some of those, those to be billed, completed items are firm, firm numbers.
They're firm, firm, and we're waiting for the billing.
They are firm or they're?
They're finished. We have some items that have been finished and we're waiting for them to close out that final billing piece.
Okay, so we're confident those bills are, or we know what those numbers are?
Right, and they're, but then there are pieces that are still being completed and we have roughly $45,000 still being held in contingency with the hopes that we wouldn't need any of that.
And obviously, Tofa, we're not gonna allocate any of the $236,000 until all the work's done.
Correct, once October comes along, we'll have a much better idea of all these costs coming in, being billed, having it done and booked, as well as the pieces that we want to finish up, the projects at John Long Middle School, as well as the windows at Woodview. Those are some of the outstanding pieces, which we should have solid numbers on again sometime in October.
So the Woodview windows are in the $226,000?
No, they are not, they are complete, they are considered to be completed. So you can see the Woodview piece.
Is it part of this?
Yeah, it's part of the $226,000.
The windows are in the $226,000.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the contingency amounts are within the $2,279, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I went to Hoffman the other day and they were saying that part of that $45,000, they were thinking they were gonna have to use for the exit, the exit, going to Highway 60, you know, now you're coming in and as you're going out, it was uneven ground and they were thinking they were gonna have to have some bad soil there and ended up not having to do that, so the test track came in and it was, it was good. So, you know, those are some of those pieces that we weren't sure what would happen with, it's sitting there all winter, and some of those pieces, and they weren't, they were able to do it within the budget without having to use contingency, but there is still money in there for unforeseen. good, so, you know, those are some of those pieces that we weren't sure what would happen with, it's sitting there all winter, and some of those pieces, and they weren't, they were able to do it within the budget without having to use contingency, but there is still money in there for unforeseen things that could come along, whether it's, whatever it may be.
Any additional questions for Tofa in regards to the update on the referendum budget, and more, I guess it won't be final closeout in October, but it will be
Right.
Just another update in October as we get closer to those things that are finished, being final billed, and those things that are still in progress, completed and final billed?
Correct, we'll get the billing, and then again, it'll be looking at those summer projects we have slated.
Yeah.
The bids.
Right.
Tofa, you also said $45,000 contingency, where is that, those dollars, is that?
That's in the GHS to be billed slash completed, so it's a line item there, that's where it's being held.
It's all in GHS?
Yes.
I assume this is just for information purposes at this point?
Correct.
All right, well, seems like we're winding projects down, mostly on time, and, and certainly at this point, we're mostly substantially complete within our budgeted numbers, or within our revenue sources, let's put it that way. All right, thank you. Construction report, Jamie?
All right. So, to start off, we have asphalt repair on the existing parking lots that were not part of the referendum, so this, it will start later this week, early next week, at the high school, and then a week, about a week after that, a seal coating and painting of the lines will happen. Woodview and John Long, it will happen after summer school, so the first week or two of August. Swimming pool, we had to retile ADA ramp, acid clean and replace filters this year, so we will start filling the swimming pool tomorrow. Gymnasiums, auxiliary gym at the high school is completed, along with Woodview and John, I'm sorry, Woodview and Kennedy, right now, they are working on our varsity, high school varsity, sanding down and currently staining it, and then John Long, both gymnasiums will happen after summer school again, first two weeks of August. Classroom upgrades are on schedule, flooring, ceiling tiles, plumbing, elementaries, along with the high school, and those were our projects that are on schedule and currently in progress, right, yet. The main bathrooms at Woodview, one will be completed this week, and the other two on the north end will start next week, so we're on schedule there. John Long Middle School, windows are in process, but on schedule, classroom upgrades with electrical, PA system, clocks, upper, upgrades in the ceiling systems, everything should be completed next couple of weeks. The only thing we are having to issue with is a few unit ventilators for John Long Middle School's classrooms, it will affect three classrooms, they will not arrive until end of August, so I've been in contact with Mr. Dearing, and we will work with the contractor to make sure that happens during the school year. Swing sets installation at Woodview Kennedy, looks like right now, the first couple of weeks of August. So, and, and Kennedy is really depending on Spillvogel getting over there and finishing grading. So, I spoke to, and talking about Spillvogel, this is part of the referendum, I spoke to Spillvogel today, and his goal is to complete grading at the high school this week. The biofilter over by the tennis courts, that, that material came in, and he will start on, he will start on that biofilter right after that, and then shortly, he will, once that is finished, he will go over to Kennedy. So, that, that's a schedule, that's, that's on track. The biofilters also at Kennedy will be redone, the one by the swing sets, and we will monitor that situation. So, that is really about it right now, so everything is on schedule, we're looking good, we're going to start a school year, with the exception of those couple of unit ventilators.
The asphalt repairs, they're non-referendum, right?
They are non-referendum.
Are they funded out of 1819 budget, or 1920?
19, 1920.
1920.
Ten, ten.
Okay.
My current.
Yeah, fund 10, but the 1920.
That is correct.
Budget. And we're taking care of all of, or maybe that all went away, I guess that all went away, that was buckling as you come in off of Fifth Avenue, that's all been replaced, is it not?
So, we are, that has been replaced.
Yeah.
With the exception of, in right south, right in front of Woodview, the existing, there is a section they did not touch, however, it took some abuse, and that will be, that's part of, that's part of my budget.
Okay.
That is correct.
And are all being resealed and restripped?
Yes.
100%?
100%, yes.
So, the weeds out here won't be going away? People, a number of people.
Yes, yes, it's pretty much gone, but yes, they are disappearing, thank goodness. I'm sure the village will appreciate that.
All right, any additional questions for Tofa? For Jamie, sorry. Sorry, Jamie. As always, thank you very much, it's much appreciated, a lot goes on in the summer, and much needs to be taken care of without kids here, so we appreciate it. Okay, with that, then, I would entertain a motion for the Board of Education to convene into closed session to consider, one, teacher compensation, two, employment compensation and performance-related data, the superintendent and other administrators, three, strategies for crime detection or prevent, prevention, four, transportation contract, and five, apparent request involving social and personal history. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 1985-1, sub C, D, E, and F. I have such a motion.
So moved.
A second.
A second.
We'll take a voice, vote?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, yes.
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 And yes, we're closed. Thank you.